You made it, thank you.
Yes.
We made it, hey, excellent. All right. Keep this up with the budget hearing and roll call.
Brian.
Right here.
And Tyler's assets. And Kim.
Here.
And John.
Here.
And Devon.
Here.
All right. Name changes, excellent. So I see an approval of the agenda for the budget hearing?
Salute.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Great, we have a budget. This is a time for public input. I don't know if anyone here, I don't think so, but maybe if anyone is here for the public input on our budget that we'll be certifying or approving later this meeting.
It was published in the paper. I have not received any oral or written comments. And nothing has changed since the last time we reviewed this. The SSA is set at 206. And with this budget, we are going to maintain a level, a total levy. Last year was 18.9 and this year we're proposing 18.87.
All right. Do you want to wait any longer?
No.
I don't know if this is...
You guys don't want to talk about taxes?
No.
Not a single one of them.
I move to close the budget hearing.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, stands adjourned from the budget hearing. Okay. Now, do we need to go ahead and have another roll call to start the regular? Okay, so we're starting the regular meeting. I need an approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Salute.
All right, thank you.
Second, all right, do I have all in favor?
Aye.
All right, as I've already said, approved. Thank you. I'd like to make one change in which is to move, we have some people from the Athletic Boosters here to speak about a, it says report here, but I think it's the conversation about some, like a piece of property, or not property, but a structure you all are thinking about. Is it all right if we just move you up a little bit in the agenda? Sure. Get you all out of here quicker and...
Yes.
They won't stay.
They'd rather sit there.
Yeah, well, I can move you all the way to the bottom too, if you'd rather.
Not necessary.
All right. Do you want to go ahead and, do you have anything?
Yep. Just briefly. My name is Rick Parent. I'm the president of the Boosters. We have Brian Tressi here, who is also on the Boosters. And if you allow us to go ahead with this project, we have Tom Berryke here, who will be building the project, so if you have any questions for him later on. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to ask for your approval to move forward with the building of a storage building on the new baseball softball complex. We're hopeful that you will approve the project at your May meeting, so construction can begin in June. Little bit of background, a storage building for the baseball softball wasn't included in the original project. During the process of our meetings about the baseball softball complex, a decision was made that using the existing building, which is a garage over by the current field, wouldn't be feasible, in large part because of the size of the building and then the need to get equipment from here all the way over to the new complex. So as a result of that, an option was created for a 30 by 40 building to be built in the new baseball softball complex for things like safety nets, equipment, field maintenance supplies, and to house the irrigation control system for the baseball softball and practice soccer fields over there. The original estimate, when it was made as a alternative number three in our planning session, the estimated cost was $143,149. And that included the concrete foundation, the actual sprinkler control system, and the building itself. When the final numbers were in, the group decided that we would split the project and part of the project would remain under the overall building for the baseball softball, and that would be the construction of the concrete slab that the building would sit on, the running of the utilities to that building, and the actual sprinkler control system. And then the athletic boosters agreed to be responsible for building the actual storage unit itself. At that time, the division of the $143,000 was, would have been just over $39,000 for the project for the concrete slab and the rest of it, and then the actual building was estimated at $103,000. Our goals in building this building are to provide a very well-built, low maintenance building that is not only functional now, but will also be functional in the future and will aesthetically fit in seamlessly with the rest of the baseball softball soccer complex. You won't be able to tell that this wasn't part of the original plan. We have worked with American Ag Systems, Tom is the general manager of that, and they provided an estimate for the building of $67,500, which the boosters are willing to fund completely. And American Ag Systems and story construction, since the decision was made to split this, have worked frequently to make sure that the timing of the project, there wouldn't be any need for story construction to slow down anything they were doing, that we would be ready to go when they were ready to go, and to make sure that, again, that it looked like everything else in the new baseball softball complex. That's my presentation. We, if you want, we have pictures of the drawings of it, but we're also, we have to answer certain questions that you have.
One of the things, just, I'm not asking a question, but we've had a chance to talk to Tim and some of the boosters, and this might be the first time some of you are hearing about this. So when we talked about it, we kind of said, we want to ease into this so that everyone understands it. I think that they might even have drawings and things like that if we could, or were possible, to look at. My, my goal, as I look at this, and I look at this on the agenda, would be that you, as board members, are informed about what's happening. You can ask the people that are talking about building it, Tim being the athletic director as far as heading that, or however you want to say that. What, you know, when they're building it, we shared with them the information that last time the boosters built the one to the north, what they did for the board and what they gave. So we kind of said that we're going to give that, you know, high-level look at it tonight, and hopefully you'll be able to ask any of these people questions about it. Who's going to be holding the contracts? Who's going to have the insurance and that type of thing until that baby's built? And then in May, we talked about possibly coming back and asking for your approval. So I don't want you to be, you know, boy, here, they brought something into me tonight and they want approval on that. I want you to be, be able to ask questions on it. So I don't mean to interrupt what you're doing there, Rick, but that's kind of a background of where we're at with that.
Well, certainly, we're appreciative of the gift. And it truly is a gift because it's something that's not incorporated. It sounds like the district is able to participate because funding, because the bids came in? Are we, are we participating at all?
We're not participating.
We did the foundation.
I'll go into the next steps here.
Okay.
So, so if you guys want to entertain the project and you want to get anything from Tom, the next step would be for the Booster Club to enter into a contract with Tom for the construction of the building. But we can't really do that, it's on your land. I mean, Booster Club doesn't own the land. So that's why we need the approval. So we would approve the contract to make sure the Booster Club funds are protected and insured, and, you know, whatever other protection we require for a normal construction contract. But then you guys would essentially have to approve as a board. And I don't represent the school district unless you want me to. No, I don't. So you guys, you know, need to do your own thing to approve the contract because at the end of it, yes, you will, it's on your land, so you own it, you'll maintain it. While it's being constructed, someone gets injured, school board's going to get sued. I mean, so there are a lot of issues that we need to approve for our funding and you guys need to approve for, from a school board perspective. So the idea would be that we'd have this contract done and back for the next meeting, Rick?
Correct.
Yeah, so...
The most recent would be when we entered into an agreement with the city, right? And built the pavilion out by the soccer fields in the elementary school? Would that be right?
That's before my time.
No, when we just recently did the...
Addition to it.
The addition to the pavilion out there.
Oh, yes, yes.
Because Parks and Rec built it, right?
Yep.
But it's on our land, and so we maintain it. So if we follow the same process, we're all protected, is that correct?
That's what we want to make sure, and I...
Well, again, I just want disclaimer for the camera here. I'm not giving this school this or any legal advice.
No.
I don't know if the fact that it's part of the other project means that now somehow it's aggregated with the rest of the funds you're spending and you need to now go out and bid for it. I don't, I don't know.
We will call all ours, we'll call all ours and make sure we got it straight away.
Yeah, right.
Because there may not be even a need to buy duplicate insurance.
Well, no one's getting duplicate.
Right.
Insurance, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
That's why we need you to see the contract so that you satisfy yourself with the contract that we're putting together and everyone's good to go.
And Tim? I mean, have you, Tim and Lindsay, you've been in the meetings?
I have been, yes.
And... Are you good to go?
Yes, absolutely.
I just have, I want to make sure I'm picturing this right because, so, so the boosters, and I do want to start off by saying thank you very much, that is a tremendous gift, and we're lucky to have people who support our district like that. But, so I think you mentioned like this lab part, and so, and forgive me because there's just a lot of projects going on right now. Is that already been approved and we're okay with it? Okay, so it's not a question of that possibly not happening due to funds? Okay.
Do we want to have some put on our slab?
Okay, I just want to make sure because like I said, there's like...
It's possible by insurance.
Yeah, we'll be providing as part of our assets, and then we would provide, that's part of our insurance policy every year, is that true?
So liable, like during construction.
Well, but you can't do it until it's a gift, because if you spend it, not legal advice, but generally, if you spend any money towards it, then it, then, you know, you run into the bidding and all those other rules. So to be a pure gift, the Booster Club will contract for this to be constructed and carry, you know, whatever insurance, naming the district as additional insured, or whatever else we need to do.
That's what we need now.
Until it's completed, and then this way the district doesn't, because they can't pay a set four bid.
They, they, there's different people that are sitting in these seats, but the Booster Club has that experience about doing storage shit. You did that one to the north side, and it, it has worked out well for us. But we just want to make sure the board, the Booster Club, everyone that we're doing it right and we're following the rules that we need to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm in favor of having a contract put together for, for May board meeting.
So, can you, when you have pictures, you can leave. I'm just curious, so if anybody asks, we can just show like where, I don't know, so whatever. I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine, I'm just, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, it all sounds great, like a no official action for us tonight.
Right.
Next meeting, come back, you have a contract for us, we'll have some of the answers that, or answers to the questions that we were all just discussing.
Yep.
And hopefully we're great. Thank you all for putting this together, yes.
And we're, we're here what we have to do in terms of our seeking advice from anybody. We need to...
We'll go through our...
If there's any paperwork, our board meeting, our packet goes out the Thursday before the Monday?
Well, yeah, I assume we're going to have to, I mean, I'm not going to send it out of respect for another attorney, I'm not going to send the attorney the contract for the first time, you know, three days before your board meeting. So, I mean, I'd like to, once you decide who's reviewing it, I'd like to get it to them here in the next couple of weeks, so that by the time your agenda for the next meeting comes up...
We're ready to go.
They've approved it and we're...
Yeah, that'd be phenomenal.
I guess my assumption would be Lindsay and Tim are the ones who need to...
Yes.
We can get it started.
I mean, they represent us.
Right.
And so...
And then I would like to see from the, looking at it, at the next meeting, Rick or Tim or whoever is, can we see the drawings of it and see, can put them up there and, here, board, here's where this is going to be laid out, and you can show all the different bells and whistles and things like that. And all stories, people that has bells and whistles, but...
Well, and for it to be seamless, quite honestly, you know, like, like you were saying, we'd need to know that the boosters are ensuring it, that, that everything's in order so that we don't become liable at any point in time before the gift is given, even though we're very appreciative, but, you know, I mean, those are the things we're going to need for it just to happen.
Can I just send it back?
So can I be the smart aleck? We better put it where we put the concrete.
Reasonably close.
Reasonably close, okay.
All right, so does anyone else have any real questions about this?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is phenomenal. Thank you all for putting this together, boosters for the generosity, and, and then Tim and Lindsay, you all will be in contact and get the legal stuff all figured out and have everything written up, ready to go next meeting?
So both sides have it.
Thank you very much, Jill, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
That's really good news.
Yeah, you can leave.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Dismissed. All right, excellent. I guess public forum is next on our agenda? Cool, all right, well, sorry, we'll get to the exciting stuff in a minute.
I'm just here to post work.
Perfect.
Work, we missed that.
Nuts up here, so, and some snacks. So, all right, let's move on, can we move on to the oral reports? The 2018-19 district priorities and annual goals, which we've talked about quite a bit. We have updates on that, I believe this is, you know, we're making progress on some of those things. We kind of have a spreadsheet that passed.
Right. I don't know if there's anything from the administrative team?
Any updates?
Any updates for that?
Thank you.
Sorry. Any updates for the 2018-19 district priorities or annual goals?
All right, that was quick and easy. And then, what was it, last month we got together, we had a very productive meeting talking about the three to five-year district priorities. That was phenomenal. And, yeah, that was a really, just a, one of my favorite times as a board at the Advent team, that was awesome. And Lindsay, you said that you wanted to give us a little update on where we're at with this.
I would agree with you. I think it was really a great opportunity for us to sit down as administrative team and board and talk about some of the priorities in the future. One of the things that we've tried to do as a board team is to take the information that Jim and John had shared with us and try to put this into a, well, it'll eventually be into something like this, which is the, basically the three to five-year priorities, and then it will have below that, the annual goals. We have talked a couple different times on this. One of the things that we're finding is, because of our schedule and because of trying to fit it in with all the different things, what we have is, we have a rough draft. It's not something that I want to give to you tonight because I don't think, I think there's an emphasis on the word rough. And you guys hop in here if you have anything to add to this, if you want to. What we are doing is, we have planned a date where we are going to go offsite. We're going offsite so that no one can be pulled out because of this or that, and we're going to be looking at, you know, two, three, four hours, whatever takes us, I don't know how long it'll take us, to crunch this thing. And what we want to do is, we want to bring that back to you with some more detail than what we currently have now. Is that fair, administrative team, as far as when we talked about, we, we started talking about it, we probably ate up an hour and a half of our administrative team meeting, which you can probably realize, I'm not saying by that that it's not important, but I just want to make sure that, before we come to you with something, we better make it, make sure that it's a little bit smoother than a rough draft. Anything to add?
Do you feel confident with the timing that we're looking at? Because I think this was a, you know, this is one of the last steps that we'll have before the, turn it over to you guys for those district goals, and I just want to make sure that you think we have, we're still on track for that in April. It feels like today it felt like the end of May, but it's not.
It was interesting because some of the conversations that we had in our work session, they picked up, you know, Mr. Danison was looking at one of the things, and he was saying that this is what he thought it was, and someone else might have said, well, I think it might be this. So we're talking through this a little bit, not anything big that we can accomplish, but taking the input of everyone.
Yeah, well, I would say that Mr. Danison was probably right because he was in my group.
Oh.
I'm sure it was relevant. I'm sure it was relevant.
It was actually all around the COVID.
It was, so not surprising.
I think it's very important that we wrap up on the, in the timeframe that we committed to, we all committed to.
Right.
So that we can move forward seamlessly. We've got a lot going on next year with new board members, with big things happening in the district, and so we want to just make sure we've got all of our ducks in the world before that happens.
We're, we have that planned for, it's, well, it's actually going to be next week, but we've had a conflict, so it's following. So it'll be before the next board meeting. We just felt that to take that time away, that's only devoted to that conversation.
Well, yeah, it's worth it. Are you saying next board meeting, there'll be official approval?
Well, I think we're saying that at the next board meeting, we would have our...
Official draft.
Official draft.
And potentially approved?
Well, I think, I'm trying to remember, call the conversation that Jim and John, where they kind of left off. We had the three main points, we all agreed on that that meeting, and then what he asked the Advent team to do was to go back and write sentences or small paragraphs for each one of those bullet points.
And then bring it back to us.
I thought then to invite the, the outside of the board meeting, to invite the, the board member that was a part of those teams to kind of review it, right? So I was, I can't remember our bullet point, Lindsay, that we were a part of, but, what? I'm sorry, it's on camera, I forgot that. But that you were going to kind of pull me back in, and you, Vic and I, and Stacy, we're going to, yeah, work at that a little bit, and then present it back to the board.
And what we were going to try to do as an administrative team was to try to, from that, put some of those annual goals, or what we thought would be annual goals underneath. Do you have, you're okay with that?
I think that, that's fine with me, sorry, but the, I want to make sure we get the three to five-year ones first. Like, that's way more important to me than constructing the annual goals. Like, what's the next biggest priority is getting those three to five-year priorities out, get aligned on that. So don't spend too much time on the annual goals if we don't...
We haven't aligned on that.
Yeah, we haven't aligned on that piece, right? I don't, I think we're really close based on that last meeting, I just want to...
It was, my understanding was that it was essentially wordsmithing to make it fit into a really short phrase that kind of represents those, right? But that's accurate, right? It says, don't cut out the meaning, but, right, in agreement, that's, that has to be first. But I'm sure these guys, I shouldn't speak to you, but I'm sure, being a part of the conversation for as long, I'm sure they're thinking.
And it's interesting that you say that because one of the things that we had a conversation with in our meeting was, can we change, not the wording, but just the words, do a little bit wordsmithing? And we don't want to change the meaning of what we had met on, so that is something that we will be looking at.
I think it, it might be beneficial for everyone involved if you send us your wordsmithed priorities before you guys commit four hours of precious time into wrapping it up. Because it would be a shame, I'm sure you're not going to be that far off base, but it would be a shame to come back to your board member who was a part of your group and have them say, that's not the way I thought of it, and you have spent all of this time and effort to put annual goals under it. That's something we've done in the past, and it was always a contentious situation. And I like the way that we're headed, so if you've got some rough drafts on wording for those primary priorities, I'd love to see from my group before you do your retreat. And I love that you're going away and you guys are going to work on that, but let's not waste time. Your time. I mean, my time, I'm sitting at home just reading what you're doing, you know, right? And I know your time is precious, so...
Any questions from the administrative team on that?
I appreciate that.
I know. And that helps us.
Yeah, because it's a good point, we don't want to go down a road if those three to five are not where we need them to be.
Right. And it would be really nice to hit May meeting and everybody be on board and just...
Go.
And then from there, we start working on the one year. Even if, even if you, if you shoot us a message in the next week and say, hey, this is what we're thinking, are you on board? I think that that gives you a place where your four, or your retreats, or your time away can be spent on the one year. I don't, we don't need to wait till May to approve the big picture.
Am I wrong?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. If you want to go with whoever the board member was in your group.
Yeah.
Right.
They're good with what that is. I think you can take that as the green light to go ahead.
I think we're all in line, and I don't think that you're a retreat away from wordsmithing those big priorities. I just think, let's make sure, before you invest the time. And then you guys can go away and you can take care of the yearly things that go under and bring it back to us for final approval in May.
I thought there was...
Yeah, because it would be kind of fun if we, we were able to say, May, here's the annual goals.
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, if that means I need to come in and do something, I'd more than, would want to do that if it helps, you know, after you guys have the time. I understand, I don't want to shorten you on the time, you say you need to do it, but ahead of that May meeting, it would be nice that it wasn't our first glance at it, that Friday before, that we can just help.
Yeah.
So that it just helps to move it along and you get it sooner and...
And, yeah, and I can, I hate to complicate it a little bit, but I'm probably going to, when you start setting up the annual goals, sometimes that makes you rethink the three to five-year one to two, so, so we'll just kind of take it under advisement if that works.
This retreat that we're talking about is later this month. We would have administrative team meetings between now and then...
Yeah, I think we might need to reevaluate our, maybe what we're doing.
That's a good point though, John, because...
Exactly.
Just in our initial conversation last week, I mean, we're like, okay, so what, typically looking at our annual goals now, where would those, some of these fall that are still priorities? And some of our three to five-year priorities are pretty close. We have two of them that are pretty similar, and so then trying to decipher between...
And it, and when you start doing rubber hits the road, sometimes you're like, well, maybe we need to rethink this as, you know, the practical, implementation practicality sometimes drives it, hey, we may need to change that a little bit from what we discussed as a function of what you guys see as a practical matter that we as board members, you know, wouldn't perceive even. So I want to leave you that latitude of, we still got a chance to back up the bus if we, we say the three to five needs to be tweaked like this after you set the annual goals. I think that would be understandable and expected, probably, but anyway, throw that out for discussion.
Any other questions from administrative team? Board?
Sounds good. I thought it was fantastic process.
Yeah.
Really, hats off to all of you for putting that together, it was really good.
I, I just have a quick thing to, just for a report. One of the things, when we have our audit, the, they come back and they, one of the things that they don't like is the fact if we have any balances in our hot lunch account from individuals or families or whatever you want to say that are negative. Now, here's the way that I'm going to handle this. The, I'm looking at the, the information that I had, this came from the DE.
I have it, I can...
Okay.
It just arrived, so we didn't get time to put it there.
Our, our process has been that we have policies that'll state that we're not going to make a difference in kids as they're going through the lunch line, if they're, they're coming through, they're going to get a regular reimbursable meal. One of the things that we are working with our building administrators, if there's a really high balance that might be negative, trying to eliminate the fact of the, what do I want to say, à la carte items, keeping those so that they're not, you can, you can get à la carte items and you can rack up the price pretty quick. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to write a letter back to the DE and to talk to them about, we make sure that every child receives a reimbursable meal. I'm going to enclose a policy, if your policy hounded seven 10.4 meal charges, I believe, and it talks about payments for meals and how we do that. I'm not going to go into all the detail and tell you, you know, this is the step and that's the step. We have a process and a procedure for that. And then I'm just going to talk to them about also that we're going to do our best to them about also that we're going to do our best to make sure that those people pay their bill as far as if it's, it's in a negative status. There are some schools, and I will tell you, that will do it differently. And, we're not doing it differently. The, one of the differences, some schools will go after them, these delinquent payments in small claims court. I would like to regularly call up a person, go ahead, what were you going to say?
Significant is really what you would want to know from the board, right? What do we consider significant?
The significance is we had a negative total as of June 30th. We measured at that time, June 30th was $2,700.
We deem that not significant.
That was total.
Yes, we do. We deem that not significant.
But, it is.
But, it's got to be by each individual.
The DE.
Deal.
The DE. Which didn't probably help, we had one person, one family, that was around $1,000.
Okay.
That probably triggered-
This, this response?
This, this response is, your, people who have, right now, it's a hot topic. And, it probably doesn't matter if we're $2,700 negative or $20,000 negative. They want this, this is in the forefront. They want people to start looking at this. They also have made it the flexibility fund. In the general fund, they allow flexibility for boards to move money over. I mean, so this, trying to, they've made it mandatory for districts to set up a charitable fund, which we do, we have a charitable account, and right now, we have about $2,500 in there. And we do it fairly at the end of June 30th, after we've tried to collect money and tried, done all the efforts, then we move over equitable and fair for everybody gets about the same amount. Now.
Everybody that is-
Is negative.
Same balance.
Okay, I was like, June 30th. We try to get, collect as much as we can. And, and then, at some point, you just have to say, "This is everything we're going to collect." And, but going back to, Lindsay said, "We feel that we have met what's required by us by setting policy, which you've directed us to not offer anything different but a reimbursable meal," and we do. But, we feel that administratively, it's our responsibility to try to control that, the extra stuff that isn't needed, so they don't get so far in the hole, too. We'll provide them the meal, the basic meal, that is no different than anybody else, but we need to control everything else outside of that, so the account doesn't get so far out of whack.
Can you control the à la carte without it being uncomfortable for the student?
It's either on or off. And so, at this point, we've taken the student and you've had a conversation with them, and we're talking high school is where we've had to address it. You know, they have the most opportunity for extra food. So, that's what we've done.
But, it's not, our intentions are not to try to make that child feel bad. When there's a discussion about that, it's done in a private, in an office area. And, we will even work with people as far as if there are negative balance, if they can start to pay something towards that, we'll work with them. But, the DE looks at this, just like Gail said, they look at it as, they don't like to see any negative balances out there. And, you can go probably not too far away, and some negative balances can get quite a bit higher than that. But, that's not our problem. Our problem is what we're dealing with with ours.
And, I ran some statistics, and as of today, our, we have a total negative balance of $5,800, and that's 126 families. We have one, that's 18% of them, and it's over $1,000, which is a frequent flyer. So, same story, just a different year. And then, we're talking one, you know, around the 400 range, two in the 300 range, and then, it's like one, two, and then, the majority of them are less than $50. So, it's, we can't ignore this. And so, when I had a conversation with her today, she said, "Basically, respond to my letter." And, basically, tell, tell, tell me what you're doing and what the board has set for policy, and continue. And, I guess, she said, "Just look for it in the future." If you have a negative balance of any kind, you're just going to get this pretty much every year. So- If I, I just want to sum this up in my head. What I heard, you're going to respond to this letter with our stated policy, which we believe is covered. We're not going to change that. That's what we, we thought we believe is correct. On the administrative side, do you have to document, or you'll take care of whatever that is to document your policy about showing how you have to?
Nope.
You're showing your policy of how you-
There's difference between a $2 meal versus $12 worth of à la carte.
Yep. I think that's so. Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you knew about it.
Yeah.
Are there any other administrative reports?
Anyone else have anything?
I mean, and we could also lump that right into announcements and celebrations, I mean, that's also next, so.
Announcements and celebrations prom was this last weekend, went very well. Well-attended, after prom was a big success. A positive atmosphere for kids, and everybody had a good time.
Awesome.
I've got a celebration. One of the goals that I've had for myself is to establish a leadership group that involves students from athletics and activities. And, I've been working out on how I'm going to set all that up during the year. And then, I applied for a grant through the Ray Center at Drake, and we got a $1,000 scholarship, which we paid for our training, and then we buy the curriculum that goes with it, and I will implement that next year.
Nice.
Pretty excited about that.
How big of a group is it?
I don't know yet. That's why, that's why I haven't decided. There's some schools that do, like, a couple of kids from each sport, each activity, and keep it to a certain number. And, there's a school in City Rapids that just invites anybody that wants to come do it. So, I'll have to see how the curriculum works and how we can set it up.
Very cool.
Fantastic.
So, Mrs. Moritz is our ELP teacher at the middle school and chair of the high school. And she has kids, I'm reading this to make sure I get it right, that she has kids enter the scholastic writing competition, and there's a statewide competition, and then you can advance on to the national. And so, we had four students who had pieces designated as honorable mention statewide. One was awarded a gold key, meaning it was in the top 5% to 7% of statewide submissions. And it was actually passed on, and it finished with a silver key nationally, which is a top 7% to 10%. So, one of our kids, and there's approximately 350,000 submissions. So, one of our kids had a top 7% to 10% submission for the writing sample in the entire nation, so that's pretty-
And that student is?
That's Chloe Burns Schweinberger.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Very cool.
So.
That's impressive.
Nice.
Yeah, it's impressive. It's very good.
Anyone else would like to share any announcements, celebrations?
Thank you all. Do we have anything from the board, board reports? I haven't been tracking anything. I can't recall anything.
Went to the mental health assembly at the middle school last week, which was very informative. I always, as a, attended as a board member, but also as a parent, just to see what that was about. Was very impressed with that. I think there was a lot of information in there that was helpful. And I love that you sent the packets out, I think.
Right, to the kids?
Yeah, to everybody after that, or I, I don't know, I got-
I sent handouts out to parents.
To the parents.
I think I did, didn't I? And, and kids will be getting theirs tomorrow, actually.
Yeah.
I had a parent contact I could make, it was super helpful to unlock a conversation to have with their daughter. So, it was really, it was really great. So, yeah, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 901, in the old business category, the 2019, 2020 certified budget.
Want to talk to you more about it?
Is there any other discussion, you need an approval for most of that, right?
I can bring it up if you want me to.
This is like our third or fourth time, I think, I can do this. So, all right, now, I do want to be intelligent about our time here if there's-
I think your, your biggest comment is going to be, "What's my taxes going to do?"
Yep.
And we have nothing to do with tax evaluation. Everybody got their tax evaluation.
That changed, right?
We are keeping our levies stay.
Yeah.
That's, that's the message, so.
Thank you, that's super helpful.
That's probably a talking point.
Board members, is there anything else that you would like to talk to around this budget?
Nope.
All right, whispers?
So, you need a motion.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, we have a second. All in favor of approving the 2019, 2020 certified budget?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Thank you, Gail, for all of that work.
Yeah.
Showing it to us many times and talking about that. I think that point about the-
Well, I'm glad we, we had a SSA earlier than later, because we usually go through so many different scenarios and trying to figure out which one we're going to go with. And, I don't know why I cannot find what, my eyes can't even-
Best part is I assumed how bad it looks for us, it's how bad it looks for you, and I couldn't find a thing in here. So, it's great.
But anyway, that's-
It's perfect.
You showed it earlier.
Yeah, I showed it earlier. I don't know where it went. But, anyway, this is what's published in the paper. And, so now, your responsibility now is, every month I bring back and we, you have, and the expenditures of those four line items that are asterisk right here. As a board, we're telling the public, "Public, we're not going to overspend in those areas."
So, I won't lie, I don't know what our asterisk looks like on this screen.
I see one of, I kind of-
You found one, where is it?
I think it's by instruction.
Instruction is one, that's the only one I saw.
Instruction, yeah, it's over there, right here, instructions.
It's over a little bit.
Got it.
And total support services, and non-instructional in total. That's your responsibility as a board, that we do not overspend those areas. And if you do, you'll get a comment in the audit, so. And it's not a big deal if you know ahead of time, it's just if you, you keep track of it ahead of time, and you republish, and you have another amendment, you have amendment. It's just, you know, doing the amendment in the appropriate timelines, but, so, thank you. And then, I had a motion by Kim, and a second by Dev, and it was always?
Yep.
Yeah.
Correct, thank you. So, we're on the second reading of a bunch of these policies. I love the new format that was sent out. I got zero responses from any board members if they want to pull any out and talk about them. Again, if no one's read them, that's fine, we can move to a third reading, or we can approve them. And I think, sure, I just want to say, if someone's on the policy committee, one of the three of us who do this, next time, we will, we'll, you know, put a few sentences together to kind of instruct you what our thinking is on this. But, like I said, I don't really want to walk through all of these unless anyone wants to talk to any particular one.
John, I think you had a change last time for the cell phone policy, and that, so this reflects the change from the last meeting. Other than that, that was the only.
John's writing policy, watch out, world.
Yep.
Just read them.
So, we can move to approve.
Yes.
At this point, yes. And so, if there were no comments and no issues, then I would move to approve all of the bulk of the policies. I'm not going to list them.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kim, thank you.
Title five, here, I'll listen to it.
All right, let's not get started.
All right.
We have a second for an approval?
Second.
All right, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, stands approved. Thank you, everybody. And again, I'm trying to make this a little more efficient next time as well.
I thought it was very helpful, thank you, the way you said this time.
And the format, too, was a nice upgrade.
Yes.
All right, we're on a new construction. Yes, we made it, we made it all the way through. Pop words almost ran it out, so. We have a whole bunch of nice minutes and notes that I think a lot of us have read through. And, I don't know if there's anything that you want to pull out of those minutes or notes that we should be aware of. I didn't have it, I didn't, I don't know if any board member saw something there that they want to surface out of those minutes or notes, or if we want to just move down to some of the kitchen lab conversation.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything to pull out of them.
I guess I have a question on how we missed that large change order in the small engines. Is that a, is that something, like a change of program, or?
Actually, we were going to talk to you about that tonight. We'd ask that you not approve that tonight.
Okay.
And to actually direct us to issue a CCD, a construction change directive. We just got pricing for that as a group on Thursday.
Okay.
It is work, correct, it's work that needs to happen pretty quickly here.
Yes.
But, the pricing, we need to review a little bit further with contractors. So, that's where the CCD comes in. We direct them to do the work while we keep negotiating on the price there.
So, this was something that was in the original plan?
It's in the original plan. It's, it's on the plans, it's in the schedules, there's a detailed drawing of it, it's in the specifications. The detailed drawing has a funny little note that says interceptor and, let's see, interceptor and trench drain by others plumbing contractor to make connections. So, the plumbing contractor feels that, that, that one small note meant that he didn't have to provide all of the trench drain and the interceptor. And, that's where the design team on Mr. Ray Construction wants to push back a little bit on, on the contractor and say, "We did indicate this in a number of locations to be provided." So, that's, that's why we want to have a little bit more time to negotiate with them.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So, when the board is approving this tonight, they're approving the go-ahead for this part of it, and the price will come later, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the CCD-
Just wanted to make sure they understand that.
Thank you. The CCD does require a signature, I believe, from Brian, so we'll send that electronically tomorrow, just to get a quick signature.
Okay.
The other thing we can do, too, with the pricing, instead of a lump sum price, we can probably run it time and material, which generally is a cheaper option for this type of work.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposing necessarily the price. I was just curious why there would be such a large mission in, but it sounds like there wasn't.
Yeah.
It was just a misunderstanding that we need to work through, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have meeting minutes, I don't know if there's anything really that I need to pull out or that I think should be brought up here.
I have one question I didn't see in there, and I'm curious if Dev has showed up at the second meeting.
So, I was going to add that I have not seen any of you any other time, so.
What are we meeting, Brad? Or, what are we meeting now?
So, there is a meeting tomorrow, the owner contractor meeting is tomorrow.
I'm going to be there.
It's like I'm not checking.
Tomorrow, 10.
Okay.
The Thursday meeting is probably a better meeting to get a feeling for the work that goes onsite and to see the collaboration between all the contractors.
Okay, so 10 on Thursday. I just want to meet Dev.
Yeah. So, if she's going to come Tuesday, then you're-
Are you coming tomorrow?
I'm going to stop over tonight, great, okay, so. No, thank you for that.
Do I get a hard hat with that?
Absolutely.
It's already there, it's already there, yeah.
Do you have a hard hat?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we need to-
Yeah, do you have your background check in?
Huh?
Do we need to talk more about the kitchen lab and possibly approve something for this? This would be-
I have C.
Amendment number five.
Amendment number five, yeah. So, consider approved, amendment number five, Hale Architecture for Additional Services for the Design of a Kitchen Lab at the 2019 Gilbert Middle School and High School Edition Renovation and Site Improvement Project.
I'm trying to find that.
And I'm trying to recall what this is, been looking through.
They're not bringing it up.
Thank you.
Amendment to professional.
This is basically saying, "Yes, please go ahead and do this work." Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Dark, yeah.
It would be for the design.
For the design.
Design of that kitchen library.
Yeah.
I think we're all in favor of, oh, sorry, I don't want to speak for the rest of the word.
So, it's just on an hourly rate in addition to what we've already done?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, we're, we're actually a fair ways down the road, and it's, like, pull up the invoice, but it's, it's going to be less than $5,000 to a design service, so we do that.
Dev, was that a motion?
Oh, uh, no, yeah, okay. I said awesome.
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 Awesome, so moved, second by Kim, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved, thank you.
I thought, I thought you said that, "I motioned." No, no, I motioned, yeah.
And then-
I went F, so it's not-
The fixtures, oh, sorry, furniture fixtures and equipment, or FF and E as some people call it, for the high school music room. We had a beautiful presentation with images of everything, thank you for all of that. And, I cannot recall if this, yeah, sorry, so this is-
This is the RFP.
Yep.
You guys probably have time to look.
Looks amazing.
So, you know how that, you just want to explain real quickly how that works?
What's the process, the next steps for this?
So, just kind of walking through the process, we've created an RFP. I know there's people that have expressed interest, and so Vic has a listing from the band instructor of some people to go ahead and send it out. But, I also saw that it was posted on the website, too, for people to go ahead and respond and send in their bids to Gail. How we look at that is an opportunity to get you guys very good pricing for your project. There will be another one that will be for the high school and middle school furniture. We broke it off into two different segments. This one, because you're going to need the furniture in August, and so we're trying to be proactive. So, we have them coming due, I think it's three weeks from now, which gives you plenty of time for review for your next board meeting for approval. The next board meeting, we'd actually like to send out the furniture. We're working on some timing with Mike and Vic on just finalizing finishes for the furniture, for the RFPs, that we want to have furniture installed in December. for the RFPs that we want to have furniture installed in December.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Jen Peterson with Story Kimworthy, I'm sorry, I, I know Brian and I've met a lot of you, so. I actually worked on the RFPs for the Ames School District for all five of their elementaries. Some of the things that were super cool in that process is just the interviews and getting to know the schools and really listening to their needs, trying to pool together the products best to get you guys good leverage pricing and to also leverage contracts that are out there too as well.
Any questions on the, I just want to make sure you knew the process, so thank you for doing that.
Yep. So three weeks or so, the bids are due in three weeks.
Yep.
So the product starts pretty well specified, but we did, we're accepting alternates on a lot of it. And how we did it is based on feedback that we got, like, if you look at the folio sorter, they said, hi, we need three rows of that, that can accept up to 20. And so we listened to specifically what the instructors needed and then wrote the bid spec specifically around that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Was that kind of a good fair representative, Vic, of that?
Yeah, I think Mike, you know, can speak to it also. We've had plenty of meetings where we've sat down and really tried to get input from the people that are living it. You know, like Byron and Karen know the things that they need and as long as the specifications are met, you know, I feel like, I think it up to the experts, it was very helpful to have someone help write out the specs because that is a rather time-consuming and arduous task for sure, for, for something like us to do versus someone that does it for a living.
Fantastic.
That's great.
I would say that, maybe if I could speak for Vic, I think for the classroom furniture pieces, I think we're both almost there. You know, my teachers just have to really decide on, I think furniture's decided, it's just, it's just the, the color options and that kind of stuff. And so we'll have that, we're pretty close, but since we don't need it until December, we have a little bit of time yet for that. So that's why it's broken out.
And also to speak to the budget aspect, because that's probably a question that you guys have too as well, is we've been running some budget scenarios for them along the ways based on pricing that we know or have just kind of gathered in the industry for a lot of these components. And we're right on track. In fact, I think the high school currently we're under. And so we're really, I know you're saying what, but I, I think a lot of it is, again, we're listening to the needs, we're tailoring the product that's good quality, it's something that's going to last you for a while, but also is on target and hard to kind of have some innovation without being ostentatious to as well.
We need an approval to go ahead and send this out, is that, that's right? A motion by?
I'll move.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Thank you for your time. All right, so we talked about change order 009.
Yep.
Do you want to make a motion on each of these individually or all together? Give them all together, I expect.
Do you want to do that first because it's the construction change directive and it's a little different?
So we have, how do we say this thing, Gail, so we?
So basically, you're going to direct Hala to issue a construction, I didn't know what a CCD was, but construction change directive. CCD. So summon to make the motion to direct Hala to issue a construction change directive. Do they issue it to the contractor, the plumbing contractor, is that what you did?
Uh, we'll issue it to contractors in this case, yeah, it's just the plumbing contractor, I believe, so.
Summon.
Second.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, on to the, this looks to be like a refund here, some money back for the circuit breaker details.
Yes, so this one, I believe is just an adjustment of the breakers that are being provided due to the fact that what the contractor submitted was a little different than what the design documents showed. So the equipment that's actually going to be put in place had some different electrical requirements. So they need to provide a different breaker to adjust to the.
Get some money back, all right?
An approval?
Yep.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, change order, order, sorry, zero, change, change order, change order 014, the door type N changes and changes to the four door swings.
I can speak to this one.
Okay, yeah, great, thanks, all right.
Refresh you, so during shop drying review, our staff caught a couple of items. I think there's some door slings that were shown incorrectly as well as we had shown a flush panel door, so. These are all narrow panel with the, with the, it's the narrow light, the small one. We had been showing flush doors, but these are practice rooms where you want to have vision into the, into those spaces just for supervision or whatnot. So we asked for a proposal to change those flush doors to narrow light doors. So that, that's where that change came from.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, stands approved. All right, the intermediate track repairs, we got 17 pages of the exact same two pages. You can catch the difference. Man, it's like, yeah, there's like, like eight copies of the same two pages. I read every page.
I remember there's like minutes of like each meeting and stuff.
Just to make sure.
I'm like, what a difference.
I just think, I thought exactly what John did, I thought, why should I have responded to this test?
Sounds like the snow finally melted, but that's what I read in here. People came out, looked at it and then, but I didn't see any prices in here.
Put some sand in the crack.
So essentially, it was decided that the repairs could be done by school staff.
Oh, okay.
So Steve and Dan will make the repairs with direction from the track company that was there to meet with us.
Perfect.
It is a fairly simple repair to dump a bunch of sand in the cracks to make sure you have a good backing and then some flowable joint sealant to put on top of it to match the level of the track around it.
Awesome.
It can be done as they show up, so it could be a continuing maintenance type of program until something else is figured out for a long-term plan for that track. It takes care of all the safety issues. If it's not just a crack, there are some areas where the top rubber layer is just loose, like a sheet almost. And if you apply that self-leveling joint sealant underneath of it, it acts as, as an adhesive and it holds that down, so it's not loose anymore.
But it will continue to deteriorate over time, right?
Correct.
It's not, it's not really a repair.
It's.
It's just a band-aid for a year or so.
It's a band-aid, because we couldn't do the original plan.
It's essentially probably a yearly repair.
The basis.
It, it will last a year or a season is what the track people suggested.
So initially, when, had we not gotten 22 feet of snow?
Yep.
When we did.
Yes.
We had a different plan. Is there any benefit to getting through the season with this repair and then doing what we were going to do?
What's in the summer?
Could it buy us two years, get us through all of this building and then decide?
We can revisit it with the, the track folks, but every time we have them out, they, they kind of want to take another step back from it. Because I think they're just, they're concerned with liability of doing work and warrant that work. And especially considering it's a safety issue. So they, they keep, it seems like every time we have them out, they, they want to take another step back.
Okay.
Which tells us what we need to know.
Right, exactly.
He said there, there could be an option if they take off the top rubber membrane layer that they could evaluate the next layer down. And he said there are some areas that are bad, but he said there are some areas that appear to be sound. So he said there could be some type of recoating, but you won't be able to tell until you rip something off.
Said something about boring samples in there too.
Yeah, so you can go out and bore around the track to get a profile of what the, the under, you know, the first layer subbase, the second layer subbase, the third layer subbase. So it'll come out in a core and you can tell the condition of each layer by taking that core sample. It's usually a round circle, they do it a lot on just asphalt roads as well. Once, once you put them in, to make sure you have the correct thickness of each layer. So that's an option that could be done, to make sure the, the underlying inner subbases.
It also came up at the meeting, just for the board to know and consider and maybe you're aware, but the track people said that our high school track isn't really a full track, it's like half a track. They didn't put on the top, the top piece, Mr. Beecher, you were there.
Structural spray.
So that's something, and, and they said it was 30 to 35,000 to do. Evidently when that was done, there wasn't the money to do it at the time, I don't know. But if that doesn't get done, we, there may be some increased wear and tear on that. That may require some, some repairs, so that's something else to consider as we're just thinking long-term about track. So somebody's going to have to go on the high school track as well, I wish Tim were here to speak to that, but.
And that's a good point, because what we're doing is we're trying to make the intermediate track out here safe so they can practice on it. It isn't going to be something that we're going to have a track meet on, we're not doing any competition on it. We just wanted to try and make it as safe as possible. But like Mike said, you know, we run a lot of track meets for a high school and a middle school on our current track, our competition track, so we got to make sure that we're setting aside or we're looking at what we're going to do to, to keep that up to date. Did I, I didn't, did someone say something I didn't mean to step on?
Also, keep it safe for the intermediate kids.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, for any of the kids.
Yeah, when would, when would, do we have any sense of when we're going to need another competition track? Do we need them simultaneous or?
I think it depends on if they put that top layer on the existing track. I think that, from the way the track people talked, and of course, we weren't at the high school track, they just were recalling from when it was installed and said, you know, without that, the wear and tear will be greater than if you had that top layer. And I'm really speaking out of turn, I wish, like I said, Tim were here, he could speak more intelligently about it, but. Because the conversation was, do we eventually shift middle school and practice middle school and high school together on that? Which from an athlete's standpoint, you're going to have 200 kids out there running, so that's probably not a great idea. But then because of that, the way that that track was installed, we're going to run into some issues with that track fairly quickly with that number of participants out there daily during track season. So I think at some point, we're going to have to have, you know, a vision of what this track, the future of it is, you know.
It, it seems to me that if we're questioning the, the long-term health of the high school track and if we've got extra money in Pebble, that's something we should do now versus later. You know, I mean, we should at least get a bid from them and consider, because we always have carryover in Pebble. And I would assume that would be something that would be covered with that. But there's no sense in waiting for something to deteriorate and spending more later. There's just no need to band-aid things.
One thought that Tim and I had, or that we discussed after that meeting was, you know, there was $70,000 in the bond to, to do the patchwork here. If we are going to do the sand option, I mean, the cost of that is negligible. And so if, if middle school is going to shift to the high school down the road, which I guess at this point, we don't know depending on funding for a, a replacement track, taking some of that 70 to use to put that top layer on the high school track to prepare it.
But can we do that if it wasn't listed in the bond?
I was just going to say we follow.
Okay.
We, which that language, the track was not language of bond. It was specific language. So, but with the shifting, we were just replacing, we moved something else out. So the track, regardless of if it's high school or, or this track, will be $5,000.
We can do.
Okay, and we have, we've sort of allocated that in our budget for 70,000.
Yeah, but I, I think it's important that you, that we get a bid and that we were proactive on that, on that new track.
And I think that, that's to break this off, but the problem is compounded also because you have a new track facility over at the high school. And then you also have, in the middle of that, you have a soccer field that everyone wants to use, boys and girls. So at least when we get our practice field, that'll buy us a little bit of time to separate that contingency out. All that would be good. So, so just to like wrap up this conversation.
The safe, you know, safe in the entries, we were going to use Pebble. Well, we just switched and used construction bond money for the safe and secure building and then shipped the Pebble money for the track.
Once the bond passed, that was all planned to go into a bond, that's taken into consideration.
Regardless, regardless, the high school track's not in the bond, right? So we have to figure out a way, but we have the money. So we should be proactive and we should get a bid and we should move forward and not be spending $100,000 to fix something that could be remedied for 20 or 30.
Yeah, okay, so just to be clear, we're now filling the cracks with sand? That's awesome.
Yep.
Thank you all for doing the research on that, and then Kim, you're asking? We'll, we'll go ahead and get a bid for the, I don't know if it's a structural spray, do you remember what they said, Mike?
I just remember he said you have half a track, they didn't put down the top layer, whatever that is. Or were you, oh, Sam was there. I wasn't there. I do know that some tracks, they, they actually have lax to hold off on the structural spray. You're going to go to a hot cure and then you put it down, so it's a better solution. That might be what's going on, but.
So Kim, we'll, we'll investigate that for the high school track and see what we're talking about for dollars.
Perfect, thank you.
Then do we see any need for doing the coring to see what the extent of the problems are on that track? Or we just hold off on doing that when we think we have semblance of the funding to re-top it?
My guess is they can react to the need to core once maybe a plan is devised on what the long-term goal is. I think there's enough time that once that's defined and decided, we could make a phone call to get them out here to do it.
Oh, wow, this is upside down.
Yeah.
We have 70 set aside for the track, is that right? And what do we have, my Pebbles upside down and I can't figure it out right now. I mean, is it, is it worth us having them come and do a core testing and perhaps throwing some Pebble dollars at it?
I think that's what.
Right. I mean, I just am trying to see what we have in Pebble. Because if they're going to come and do one thing, right, we're going to hire the same people, is that correct?
We won't, on the intermediate track, I don't believe we're hiring anyone to do anything. Our, our custodial staff probably has a half to three-quarters of the sand in or around the track already. The next thing would be to go ahead, once we get some warmer temperatures, and I know you may say, well, we're having warmer temperatures, the nighttime temperatures also have to be fairly warm. We can put, I don't know, it's called a patch kit or what it is, you guys do that more than I do. But what we will do, our people, we will try to go ahead and cut or not, cover up those, some of those cracks. And it's not going to go away, it's not going to be like, okay.
Right, right. So my question would be if, because my assumption would be if we decide to invest the money to finish the high school track, that would not be until track season was over.
Correct.
Right? And so I guess my question is, perhaps we ask them, if they're going to come out and they're going to do the high school track, we entertain them doing the intermediate track at the same time?
I don't think it makes sense to bore though until you're ready to fix it.
No, but.
I think that's what Adam was saying.
But my point is, is if they're coming out, is it a better deal?
I don't know, because when we talked about having them put on the patch, they're, they're not real, real, they, they would like to see us do that. Why don't we, because we were talking about a variety of things here. Why don't we take the bull by the horn and we'll go ahead and we'll see what is it going to cost to do the high school track? And then we're going to say, secondly, what is the best solution, kind of in a step-by-step process, to go ahead with the intermediate?
What's the vision?
Yes, yes, yes. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Lindsay.
And Kim, for your question here, there's 400,000, you know, over, almost 500,000 that doesn't get spent in Pebble that rolls over to the next year, so there's plenty there.
And there's 70, there's 70 set aside in the bond.
So what?
There's 70 set aside in the bond.
Right.
And then there's 400 sitting in Pebble.
$20, $20.
Yeah.
Okay.
It does make sense.
I think we're all good.
I think they.
You can get like one light bulb, so watch out. $20 there. Okay, fancy light bulb though. Okay. Okay, so we've approved and talked through everything under the construction thing. All right, here we are, we are now into the resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation school bonds, Series 2000, dated July 24th.
What this actually means is that in the budget you just approved, is we maximize the 405 for levy, for the, for debt service. Now, we don't need the full 405. So the difference between what we need to make our payments in the 405, we're going to use that to prepay debt. So this is the language and the paperwork we need to prepay that debt.
Can you take the longest maturity to apply it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yep.
I move approval.
Second. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Sam. Thank you for that, by the way. Yeah, just explained that a little bit. Thank you. All right, Lindsay, you wanna talk just about the employee recognition too? I think you need-
Quickly, I need to, no, so you want, I need, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the information. Usually, we've had two board members that have come to this and they've kind of tag teamed handing out some of the awards on that day. It's on June fourth. It'll be in the afternoon. And I don't know, Brian, if you, you know, scissors, paper, rock, or if you volunteer or?
Well, we also have just-
Oh, yeah.
We also have typically two board members for graduation.
Correct.
And do we have anyone here who has a senior or is a desire? We basically just need to split this up.
Okay. So my nephew is getting married on that day. So I'm not available.
So you you'll do it. Thank you.
No, I'm not available for graduation. But I won't have another opportunity to be a board member at that employee recognition. So I would love to be.
Okay.
And I have a senior and it's Aaron. So it's gonna be a little bit different. So I'm gonna not do graduation if it's okay with you guys from the standpoint of really don't know how that's gonna work yet. Need to communicate with Vic on that. But I know I'll need to be in the seats rather than on the stage. And so we'll figure that out.
Okay. So you two, and you're okay doing the recognition?
Yeah.
Event? You can hug the teachers if you want, John. It's they like it. Tried last time.
Hey, with current events, I'm not going anywhere near that.
Safe.
I'm not. It's okay.
All right. So then Deb, you and I are doing graduation?
I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't wanna.
So that means yes, definitely. Deb and I are doing graduation.
Tyler.
Oh, Tyler, I'll do graduation. Tyler and I'll do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't wanna do graduation.
Oh, you were serious? Are they kidding? Okay, that's totally fine.
Do you wanna do the employee thing?
Oh, yeah, I would do that.
Well, the three of you know, it's fine.
Two of, I mean, it's okay if more than two of them are there.
It's really a better.
If Tyler can't go to the graduation.
I'm gonna show your hands. It's only up with the speech. I'd be like.
Are you gonna take one of the times at the graduation, either the entry or the?
You said the better one is the front one?
I don't know.
I'll do that one. Okay. So sorry, just to-
People never remember the welcome. They always remember the end.
Oh, I'll do the welcome then. I have to do that.
It's pretty, it's pretty like.
Right?
Okay. Perfect. So we have, sorry, we have John, Kim, and Deb. We're gonna do the employee recognition Tuesday.
If Tyler says that he would not do anything.
At what time?
Yeah, what time is that?
It's on here, I'm sure.
No, I don't know what time it is.
Is it early dismissal that day?
Two-fourth, yeah. One o'clock. Well, one o'clock, we do the lunch.
Yeah.
And then we go to the auditorium.
Lunch too.
And auditorium is when so so one-thirty probably about.
You wanna do your trivia to make sure you know how many questions that is a district and.
Yeah.
That's some trivia that question.
All right, thank you. So the Y Says Mentoring Program. This is an, I'm sorry, you should really talk. This is an annual thing, right?
You're correct. You're doing fine. That's exactly right. Recommend approval.
So.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sam's proof. Thank you. The next one is the Front Line Education Master Service Agreement.
Isn't that tech for me? Well, that's the, that's ASOM. No, no, this is ASOM. This is our leave system, our time clock system, and then our lease.
This is a new.
New, okay.
This is.
All right, time clock thing. All right, giggles down there. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Deb.
You wanna say, maybe someone a second? No, we're good? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
All right, all right. Sorry, we're falling apart tonight. Spring weather out there. Talking about some small wares now and the purchasing agreement for food, small wares.
Uh, how about?
Oh, I totally skipped for a second.
Our great.
Thank you. I am so sorry, Mr. Johnson. So this is a fractional middle school sharing contract approval. Sorry.
We have to recommend approval.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, sorry, Sam's proof. Wow, my pen was going quick on this one. Okay, now onto my favorite one, the purchasing agreement with the AEA.
Move approval.
Don't know enough about this one.
This this takes care of our for to participate in the nutrition program because it's federal. We have to have RFPs and a procurement program. And participating in this, they take care of that. And we we participate. So we're in the big group and they take care of us for us as a district. So.
Second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're doing this. Great. The.
I want High School Music Association.
That's exactly what I knew it said for. I know it.
I want High School Music Association.
For the renewal for cooperative sponsorship with Ames Community School, this is to do some sharing if students want to participate in.
Orchestra. We have one student. Is that right, Vic? Is it just one that's doing it right now for orchestra with Ames?
Yes.
And when I talked to Byron, he just said, if we could go ahead and approve it, and if we don't have any kids, then we don't, you know, we don't have to worry about it. But if we do approve it and we have some kids, we send them over and.
And this agreement is for, I mean, if we would also have thirty kids that wanted to do it, we can do it. It's not a limit on the number of kids, right?
Correct.
So any parent who wishes, we think they could take advantage of this.
And they did, you're correct.
All right. Thank you.
Move approval.
Thank you, John. Second by Deb. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sam's proof. Thank you. All right.
Public forum to be sure.
Yep. But let's not skip the financial reports.
No.
Sorry.
Your favorite part of the meeting.
So to start off, I just kinda wanted to, I include it in your packet. I went ahead and there's all this financial information based on fiscal year eighteen. I published it and it is available outside the district office for the public to view. It's in a little binder hanging on our wall. Then also, our board page on our website, I've been updating.
I want to. Thank you.
Just want to let you know that these are some of the updates that are out there for fiscal facts, for the key indicators and the audit. I'm gonna leave three years up there. I don't think I'll leave any more than three. That's enough for people to get an idea of where we've been and where we're headed. So wanted to let you know of those updates. And and then some good news. You got the work comp information that was in there. So our, I think, moving to out of EMC and moving to SFM was a good move for our district. We saved lots of money. And it sounds like our mod rate is going to plummet, go from one point one-one down to point nine-one.
Which is good.
And so then we also, right before the meeting, we have received a refund check for work comp.
Nice.
So and that's fifteen thousand dollars.
Fantastic.
What did you say, mod rate? Mod rate. And mod rate is just basically an experience rate.
Oh, okay.
For work comp.
Yeah.
You know, the key is to get our employees back to work as fast as we can. And some and we've been doing, trying to do that. And sometimes we have to get real creative with that. But we've been able to do it so far. And so that I wanted to talk about that. And other than that, just on the financials, the, let's go to the homepage. When you look at the green and the red, this, the red, the green is the monthly variance and the red is the year-to-date. And I know it says negative, but the year-to-date revenues, it's mainly because of property taxes and tuitions. So it's okay. It's not alarming. We know that. Now, when you look down on the red and the variance down here, if you look at the detail, it's more of a budgeting issue because we were green in January and February by a lot. So it's more of a tweaking the budget.
And you're green for the year-to-date by a lot too. So.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. And then, of course, you have to take the the top red number and the green number. You're gonna have that variance year-to-date on the very bottom of this one-twenty-six to get that. So when you, if you know that, you know, is the reason for that. I just wanna bring that up. And then some of the things that I noticed going through the the detail of the green and red actuals, and the first thing that pops up, this is just, we just talked about, this is the budgeting thing right here. But is you can definitely see in the plant operation, our our winter of woes of nineteen thousand five cents over in one month.
Kill.
Right? Yeah. And, you know, and that wasn't spread out because everything happened in February. And so by the time you got to bill us, you know, we we had a huge bill in in March. And now you approved a one for tonight. It's gonna be in April. So you, you know, I hate to say this, but April, you're gonna see another high, you know, dollar amount in that. But, you know, that's just a cost of operations. We still have to operate. So it's, you know, you see those things and they point out and you know exactly what it is out of a big budget. So those are kind of some things I wanted to let you know what was going on. And then the others, the, everything else looks fine. Our cash balances, our expenditures year-to-date for the the budget, the four-line items I was talking about, you know, that you need to stay with. And we're doing great. I even did a scenario about, okay, looking forward to, do we need to recertify? Will be over. We're fine for as long as nothing big is unplanned and happens. And in the Pebble, it's just been regular, sorry about that. I was like, oh, sometimes it's crazy here right before a board meeting, trying to get everything pulled together. And so for the expenses in the Pebble, there's, I think the main thing that was happening in there, the copiers, we had some, we purchased our computer licenses subscriptions for our new frontline. That was twelve thousand seven seventeen. And then the, we're doing a little cooperative of a dump, let me see, custom dump trailer for the custodial and high school VOA are gonna share this. And so the VOA is gonna use Perkins funds for it. And then our custodial staff is going to use their budget dollars in general fund to contribute their two thousand. So it's kind of a joint effort because not everybody's gonna be using it all the time. But they each thought that it would be very helpful. And then we have some technology. Is the technology like, I'm trying to figure out what's gonna work or is it a trial thing? That's middle school hardware?
Is it your?
A lot of computers.
Middle school hardware?
Yes.
And the technology that's up there, that item or what?
No, it's, all I have is a description for it. So it was middle school technology hardware, twenty-three fifty-four is what I have that went in. Jason ordered it. So I'm assuming that he's probably.
Yeah, I I don't I don't know what that is.
Yeah, the technology department put it in. And so I'm assuming what he what he usually does is he orders some trials, you know, and orders a few to see how they work, do they are gonna work. And then he makes the big purchase. So.
Sounds good.
And other than that, the nutrition, you know, it's kind of the same thing. But we have, you know, we've had some positive things. We have a nutrition review this week. Things are going well. We have our exit interview Friday. So we'll know more. We had a new menu item today. We had.
Scalloped potatoes and ham.
And ham and.
And donuts. It sounds like some.
Onion rings or à la carte items.
I do enjoy reading messages.
Yeah.
And there's, I, and looking at reviewing the bills, there's nothing other than payroll mainly. Not a lot of activity at this time for bills. So unless anybody has any questions, I did wanna let you know what was going on and trying to publish things and getting things out there.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
For people have access to it and they can always call or whatever. And I know the other thing I've had a question on is, we don't have an updated board photograph, do we? A board? It's been a long time. So that was if we ever.
We have one with the five of us on it?
We haven't found it.
I don't know if we have one with Deb. I don't recall.
Yeah, we haven't found. So if there's ever time when we know we have all five people together, I've been instructed to bring my camera, to bring myself. So if we know about it, so let me know if you know if there's gonna be five here, then we'll just.
Just claim on the main meeting.
In other words, you're gonna have to dress up.
I won't be here next week. Here next month.
Just Photoshop me in like the high school against you.
It's been a request I'm sending.
Snapchat. Okay.
We could just, I'll send you a selfie and you could have somebody kind of blind there.
Oh, dear. So anything else anyone would like to talk about in the financial report? All right. Seeing nobody moved to public forum, we're gonna go ahead and open it up, close it up. Perfect. Thanks. And on the consent agenda, is there anything, any board member would like to pull out to talk about? Or Lindsay, do you wanna surface anything out up there?
I don't have anything to surface.
I just didn't, typically, we have like resignation letters or things like that. And I'm not necessarily asking for a lot of details, but I missed that part because there were some.
You know what? I apologize. I thought I had.
Well, one sent it to us today.
I do have them. I just didn't get them posted. So.
Okay.
Let's see. We have Katie Thomas.
She's at the board. I don't know who she's sending to, but she's at the board.
Here's Deb.
Love the lettering. Yeah.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
There's Deb's.
So that's Deb's. And then.
Yep.
And here's Coach Durbin's. Okay. And then Katie wrote two, one for her coaching, but this is her.
Sure, the child one.
I apologize. I forgot. I forgot.
It wasn't you. It was my.
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll drop them in there because I had them here. They just didn't make it to the drop box.
No, that's fine. Thank you for this.
Yeah.
Move approval. I considered you now.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, last thing is the calendar. And Deb, you worked wonderfully hard on finding a schedule that's gonna work for everybody for our annual superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, I would like to know if we can find some time within the week of April twenty-second for the meeting. Tyler's out of the country until then. He'll be here both the the week of the twenty-second and the week of the twenty-ninth. I'm going to be sending out the documents tonight. And so you'll get those. You'll have a little over a week to complete them in writing. And just it's just like last year, Google Doc. And so I'll need to know what date it is so I can back that out. I wanna make sure that Lindsay has the appropriate information before. And so I'll send instructions out today. But I would love for it to be the week of the twenty-second if possible.
That the week of the twenty-ninth was very difficult for me with college graduations and such. But I could make Monday work. But the week of the twenty-second.
What about you, John? Do you have a Sunday?
I would not be able to make the twenty-third.
Which is, I think, Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Is there a day that for you, Lindsay, between those that week?
No. I I didn't look at that that far ahead. Go ahead.
So did you say you couldn't do that Tuesday?
Couldn't do Tuesday, but the rest of the nights. Well, actually, yeah, yeah, I could do any of the other nights, all but Tuesday.
What about Thursday to twenty-fifth? I believe it's twenty-fifth.
I know.
Okay.
Works for me.
I believe so, yeah.
And you?
I think so. I'm, I think so.
Let's put it at.
It works for Tyler. Just wanna make sure I have his dates.
He said the week of the twenty-second would be.
So I'm confused. So we're moving the meeting from the twenty-ninth to the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, that, I'm not sure why that said the twenty-ninth. We never.
I that's my fault because I thought.
Oh, that's, yeah, the twenty-ninth.
Oh, I just said Tyler had sent a message and said I could do the week of the twenty-second or the week of the twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay.
So that's why, because he's out of the country.
Tyler is unavailable on the twenty-fifth, that Thursday we were just talking about.
When is he available?
The twenty-third, twenty-fourth. So the twenty-third is Tuesday.
John's not available.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, he's available. And twenty-ninth and thirty.
What about the twenty-fourth? Does that work for you?
Does Wednesday work for you?
Yes.
For me.
Yeah, that can work as well for me.
What time?
That's the.
That doesn't work for you?
Well, that's the night that we have our retreat that we're.
Oh.
Let's not do that.
Okay.
Isn't that, am I correct?
The twenty-ninth not work?
The twenty-ninth works for me.
Let's do the twenty-ninth.
Okay, that works for everybody. We're joined me too.